Good evening. I'd like to call our meeting to order and turn to Board Member Pastor Alan Sharouse to open us up.
As you are able, will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you. We will begin tonight's meeting by remembering three students who passed away earlier this year. Although we celebrate their lives and the positive impact they made on the Guilford County School family, our hearts are extended in grief to their loved ones. On behalf of the Board of Education, we'd like to extend our deepest condolences to the families, friends, and teachers of Indiana Franklin, Jordan Trong, and Delilah Nepper.
Our beloved Indiana truly made a positive impact as a sixth grader, grade student at Northeast Middle School during the 2023-24 school year. Her enthusiasm, respectfulness, and academic dedication distinguished her as a standout student. Her influence encouraged her peers to excel in their studies and build meaningful relationships. Though she was with us only for 10 months, Indiana left as a lasting, left us a lasting impression on the entire staff and student body.
Jordan Trong was very good-natured and easygoing with a smile on his face. His favorite subject in preschool at Gateway Education Center was reading, and he loved the song "The Wheels on the Bus" that was part of Circle Time. I love that song, too. Jordan's favorite character was Mickey Mouse. Gateway's staff loved Jordan, and they shared that what they loved most about Jordan was that he never missed an opportunity for a nap or for snuggles. And Jordan belonged to a wonderful family. We're grieving with them, and especially with his mother and grandmother, and we know that Jordan loved his mother and his grandmother very much.
Delilah was a beautiful young lady with a contagious laugh. She was a social butterfly who never met a stranger. Delilah loved Haynes Inman Education Center and always came into class with a smile. She had a sense of humor and loved playing jokes on people, especially her teacher. She reminded us that we can pursue joy and perseverance even during difficult times. She loved communicating with her friends in her own special way. Delilah was dearly loved by her family, her school family, and her friends. We will, we have all been blessed by knowing our sweet, beautiful Delilah.
Although we were only privileged to know these students for a brief amount of time, in their own ways, they helped to create heartwarming memories that will be cherished forever. To honor these students, please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. We want to continue by recognizing our September Employee of the Month, Tammy Whitaker. Will you please come to the podium? What was that? Let's make a deal. It said, please come on down. I just feel like saying that every time. Welcome. Getting students to and from school safely and efficiently as the third-largest school district in North Carolina is no easy task. However, it is a task that our Transportation Department tackles with passion, day in and day out. From drivers to mechanics, it takes a skilled team to keep things running. One of those skilled team members is Tammy Whitaker, a Transportation Zone Supervisor who has spent more than 20 years with the district. "In the High Point area, Tammy goes above and beyond to help students and staff," wrote Tomika Hayes, Transportation Zone Dispatcher. The Transportation Department has been influenced positively by her, despite the fact that she has taken on a great deal. Most of Tammy's students that write in her area, area are familiar with her. This woman is dedicated to her work and gives it all she has. Tammy is always ready to step up and help when needed, even returning to the driver's seat when there are driver shortages. Watching students grow and progress through their education keeps her coming back. Her dedication to assisting colleagues and the safety of our students earned her the title of Employee of the Month of September. Tammy received a $50 gift card courtesy of the Greensboro J.C.'s, and during the month of September, your photo will be displayed here at the district's central offices and in the Greensboro J.C.'s office. At this time, I'd like to ask Board Member Kristi Pratt to read aloud the certificate honoring Tammy.
Tammy, I was so happy to see this certificate and this right up on my desk this evening. I don't know if you remember, but you and I have had many conversations about transportation. And I will say that, you know, we had many of those conversations, I think initially without you having any idea who I was, and probably even before I ran to be on the board. And Tammy went out of her way to be exceptionally helpful with transportation issues that I was having from High Point to GTCC Greensboro, and would call the bus driver for me and find out exactly where they were and call me back. And the communication was just amazing. So, well deserved, and thank you so much. Your certificate says, "Guilford County Board of Education Certificate of Recognition, Presented to Tammy Whitaker, Transportation for Employee of the Month, Sponsored by the Greensboro J.C.'s in September 2024, and Signed by our Superintendent Dr. Whitney Oakley and our Chairperson Deana Hayes." So, congratulations.
Thank you so much for all you do. Do you want to say a few words?
I was caught off guard. I can tell you that. And I don't do this for me. I do it for the team that I'm on. It's not just me. It's not, I'm just the supporter for the team that works with me. And I appreciate it, and thank you so much.
Well, we'd like to shake your hand and invite any of your friends, family, and of your school representatives that are here with you. So, if you'd round them up and come on up here to the board. All right, we are now at, let's see. Do I have something else here? I don't know. I don't think so. Do you want to do that and then come back to you? Well, no. All right, well, we're going to be, we're going to continue with our Volunteer of the Month. At our meeting on September the 10th, we are recognizing Sandy Paul, I believe is the name, who is the Program Leader of the KDNA Book Buddy Program as the Guilford County School Volunteer of the Month for September 24, 2024. The KDNA Book Buddy Program is entering its fourth year in partnership with Jones Elementary School, starting out with nine students and 13 volunteers in the fall of 2021, supporting third-grade students until most recently during last school year, with nearly 30 volunteers supporting and impacting 18-plus students between third, fourth, and fifth grade. Is Sandy Paul here? Okay, if you'll come up. See, my script usually tells me to tell you to come on down, and I'm just reading from the minutes while we try to find the document. Welcome. So, now you get to hear the rest of what I have to say about you. Sandy has been a huge asset to the volunteer community, particularly with our students at David D. Jones Elementary School. Not only did Sandy take the time to support our students with academics, but she took the time to build strong relationships and bonds with our students and our staff. Sandy is the true definition of a volunteer, and I cannot thank her enough for her dedication to our students. Sandy's passion for this project knows no bounds, and she has done an unbelievable job of recruiting volunteers, collaborating with teachers, and ensuring a wonderful experience for our students. Her positivity and commitment are things to be emulated by all of us. Sandy is a role model for GEA's Guilford Education Alliance, believing that education is everyone's business, and she is making it her business to ensure that kids at Jones Elementary School are seen and heard. Sandy Paul came to Jones with an enthusiastic spirit and determined mind to impact our scholars. Her detailed organization and clear communication have allowed the program to blossom. "The heart of a volunteer is not measured in size, but by the depth of the commitment to make a difference in the lives of others," says Brittany Graulman and Amanda Robinson, staff members at Jones Elementary, and Louise Courts, Director of Development for the Guilford Education Alliance. I'm not sure, oh, you've got that? Okay, because it doesn't have that in here. So, at this time, I'd like to turn to Board Member Pastor Sharouse to read aloud the certificate honoring Sandy Paul.
Sandy, we thank you so much. We know what volunteer service means and what your leadership means, and scaling that for Jones Elementary. And so, here are these words from your Certificate of Recognition from the Guilford County Board of Education, presented to Sandy Paul of Contour Brands Book Buddies, Jones Elementary School, for Volunteer of the Month, September of 2024, signed by our Superintendent Whitney Oakley and our Chair of the Board of Ed, Deana Hayes. I will bring it to you, and then we would love to hear some comments from you.
I am truly honored to accept this award from Guilford County Schools on behalf of Book Buddies. This recognition belongs not only to me, but the incredible volunteers whose dedication makes this program possible. As many of you know, Contour Brands is home to Wrangler and Lee Jeans. It is proud to call Greensboro our home, with our global headquarters right here in downtown, with over 1,000 employees in the city. But we are more than just a business. We are a community within a community, and we encourage our, our team for, to find meaningful ways to give back to places where we live and work. Contour's commitment to Book Buddies reflects how seriously we take that responsibility. At Contour, we believe a vibrant community is the foundation of a strong and prosperous business. That's why we continuously seek opportunities to invest in Greensboro and the surrounding areas. Supporting Jones Elementary is one of the most important ways we can contribute, and we are honored to be named Volunteers of the Month. Book Buddies began four years ago with a small but dedicated group of 13 volunteers and nine third-grade students. I can still remember approaching Brian and Veronica with the idea of working with students, with local students. With their support, I moved forward with plans to create Book Buddies. And thanks to the incredible backing of Louise Courts from Guilford Education Alliance and Joshua Lieber, we began Book Buddies at Jones Elementary, and it's grown steadily since then. I'm proud to share that our original class of graduated, graduated this past June with every student receiving either an Academic or Character Award. Today, Book Buddies has expanded to 51 volunteers, and we will be able to help 37 students from third to fifth grade. Every other week, our volunteers sit with these young scholars during lunch to read with them and to mentor them. It's a simple yet powerful way to support the next generation. And while we are focused on giving back, the joy and fulfillment that our volunteers experience in return is a reward in itself. And I want to take a moment to recognize the true heroes of Book Buddies, and that is our volunteers, several of whom are here with me today. And without their dedication, their passion, passion and commitment, Book Buddies would not exist. Thank you again for this incredible recognition, and I look forward to continuing the shared mission of supporting the students of Guilford County.
Well, thank you. We'd like to shake your hand, your colleagues' hands, any friends and family or school representatives that are here. All right, we are now at public comments. We have five speakers who have signed up. I'd just like to remind our speakers that you have three minutes to make your comments. When you approach the podium, we would like for you to introduce yourself by giving your name and your address. When the amber light comes on, you have 15 seconds left. We'd like for you to begin wrapping up your comments. When the red light is, comes on, or you hear a buzzer, your three minutes are up, and we would like for you to wrap up your comments so that the next speaker will be able to begin with their comments. If people in the audience are supportive or agree with what's being said, we'd like for you to demonstrate that by doing this so that the speaker can continue uninterrupted, and everyone has the opportunity to hear the comments. Our first speaker is Phyllis Carter, followed by Kim Price. Welcome. I do also want to say that Board Members Kim Erbry and Deborah Napper have joined us by Zoom audio, so they are here.
Good evening, Superintendent Oakley, Chairwoman Hayes, and to all of you serving as a member of the GCS School Board. My name is Phyllis Carter, and I live at 586 Finish Line Drive, Guilford County. I want to start by thanking all of you for your willingness and your courage to serve our county schools during the current political climate. It is so abundantly clear that our schools, public schools, are under attack, and there is no shame in the game of our Republican-led Assembly. I wonder if anybody thinks that these are really fine people tearing apart our public education. While they are not ashamed, I am ashamed for them. If laws are expressions of society's dominant beliefs, the proposed school voucher legislation SB 406 and HB 823 will be evidence not only of our legislators attempting to end public education, but of our letting it happen. I am here tonight because I want to be counted in the number of people who do not, who, who not only dissent, but have come to support those of you on the board who really believe in public education, and you fight for our children's right to have the best education possible. You believe in our children, and beliefs matter. If we truly believe only some children should be served and that our tax dollars should be used for this to be so, we should simply do nothing, and too many of us are. Everyone who cares about children, all children, who cares about opportunity, who cares about justice, should oppose these bills loudly. We are better off when opportunity, fairness, dignity, and safety are simply human rights. Let's not let the legislators take them away from anyone. As a grandparent, I have come to remind you that we are counting on you, and there are those of us standing with you in times like these. Our children deserve better.
Thank you. Kim Price, followed by Tanya Martin. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Kimberly Price. I reside here in Greensboro, North Carolina. To the superintendents, each of you esteemed, school board members, and other school leaders, thank you for your service and your interest of our school and of our children. As a mother and a taxpayer, I'm appalled by the recent activities of the GOP majority in Raleigh and their clear efforts of destroying public education right before our eyes. Their action deserves pause, attention, and perhaps even some prayer. In the sum of us, Heather McGee Arthur, scholar and attorney, speaks an important psychological experience. Experience, excuse me. It showed, quote, "Thinking about diverse future changed white Americans' policy preference about government." The progress of one group, she found, was an automatic threat to another. Further, it exposed the threat to being so menace that those interviewed would resist policies that would benefit them just because they might also benefit people of color. It is a zero-sum game being played, and it benefits the few. It's time to put this to an end. Our unity, our care, and our fairness. Excuse me. Our fairness are the way to a greater good from which everyone will benefit. It's time to leave the zero game and not elect politicians who seek to divide us for the benefits of the wealthy to foster collaboration or competition in the common good for individual choices when it hurts others as well. This week, I hope all of you are paying attention to what's happening at our State House and what is being done in all of our names but without us. I hope with your permission and blessings, this experiment that Heather McGee speaks of indeed is a lesson for our North Carolina legislatures. A choice to offer school vouchers to leave public school, it hurts others, and for most of it, it hurts the ones that's actually using them. Untested, unsupervised charter schools and independent schools find to accommodate white flight and are not good choices for anyone. The legislation needs to be examined, their motivation more deeply, and stop paying, excuse me, stop playing the zero game. We all need to be outraged at this by their actions and their respond with how we vote. My high school-aged daughter is counting on us to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Tanya Martin, followed by George Rubenstein. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening to you, Dr. Oakley, Chair of the Board, Deana Hayes Green, and all of you who serve on the Board. My name is Tanya Martin, and I am a mother, grandmother, and I pay taxes, as you all do. So, I live at 3 St. Freud Place in Greensboro, North Carolina, and I have come here tonight as a woman who understands power and politics. And I am more than a little bit concerned about what is happening in public education at the hands of the so-called supermajority in our state legislator, legislator. It is very hard to believe that these are the people that I watched run for office with the claims of wanting to serve the public good. They are more than anything else gutting the public good. I'm weary of the notion held by many that society can learn so much from business practices and therefore the not-too-recent trend to privatize everything. We should ask more questions as we watch small businesses close all around us. Perhaps we should question the monopolies held by many corporations driving suppliers' prices up for small independent businesses. This practice, although once illegal, has closed many of those smaller businesses, although competition is the ever-ready excuse that's always given. I find it so sway that some have chosen to use this same reasoning to support school vouchers, sending money and children to private schools. It's all smoke and mirrors, and our children will suffer because the root of the stated problem has never quite been addressed. There is one business practice, however, perhaps from the management years of the 80s, that I like to call the Five Whys. One asks the question, answers it, then asks why of that answer, then the next until the fifth question is pondered. And one is deeper into the truth of the question or even at its root. This is truly an occasion to ask five whys of our legislator and ourselves as they seek to end public education with SB 406 and HB 823, using the bribe of school vouchers. Why? Well, because everyone has a choice. Why? Because public schools are not always good schools. Why? Because they are not predominantly white anymore? Gosh, it only took three whys to get at the real reason. Now that we know the answer to the why, the question is, what are we going to do about it? Tonight, I advocate for the greatest power you hold, and that is your vote. Need I say more? Thank you.
Thank you. George Rubenstein, followed by Jack Harrington, our final speaker. Welcome.
Thanks very much. My name is George Rubenstein, and I live at 5106 Ainsworth Drive, Greensboro, North Carolina, 27410. I'm a school counselor at Ben L. Smith High School, and I would love to echo the previous three speakers. They very eloquently talked about the current state of affairs. And FYI, if you'd like a nice website to go to, www.ednc.org, I believe, or .com. Meben Rush, I believe, is the name of the coordinator of that. She does a fantastic job on a daily basis. First, I wanted to thank the Board for approving the contract for Mr. Sellers, our new principal at Ben L. Smith High School. He's done a wonderful job in getting us off to a great start and following up on the momentum from Ms. Ankins from the spring. There is definitely a different vibe in the building. We have accepted about 175 new students since August 26. My first actual question is, may the academy at Smith have a name change? Ben L. Smith High School has a Manufacturing and Engineering Academy. This is our fourth or fifth year. There is a lot of confusion for students and parents about understanding which school is which. Applications for one have been meant for the other. Students coming in from other states or districts are not familiar that they are separate schools separated by about a block. Is there anything we can do to encourage that process? Question two, Learning Hub, sort of an after-school tutoring program, will begin next month. Last year, teachers received $40 per hour and counselors earned $25 per hour. This year, it will be the same structure. We're curious why that is, since counselors coordinate many aspects of Learning Hub, including encouraging students to attend, coordinating the outside vendors to come in for food distribution, and walking around the halls to make sure attendance sheets and students get where they need to be. Thanks very much.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Jack Harrington. Welcome.
My name is Jack Harrington. I live at 1602 Alderman Drive in Greensboro. Private school vouchers enact disastrous public policy. The pretext that this strategy is about opportunities for underserved kids has now been glaringly exposed. Whatever their proclaimed intent, I believe the actual effect of this elitist, escapist voucher handouts will be to eviscerate our public schools even further. I fully realize that you do not have a legislative vote, but I also know that you have access to those who do. To all in the room whose leaders control the General Assembly, your leadership listens to you. You are our first line of defense, and we should all be squalling to the highest heavens that this dreadful giveaway stabs of public schools in the back. We have public streets for everybody. Your driveway or the road back to your farmhouse is for you alone to pay. We have 24/7 public law enforcement. Your private security is your burden to bear. We have public water that flows from our fountains. If you want a bubbler, that's on you. And simply put, for privileged private use means you, not we, should pay for it. I don't begrudge parents teaching their children the catechisms and tenets of their faith in private school settings, but do not subsidize your sectarian mission with publicly extracted tax revenue. And here's what really escapes me. I can't figure out why it's to anybody's advantage to cut the legs out from under public education mandates. Who benefits from our not doing the very best by all of our children? How does our disgraceful bottom-tier funding for schools and teacher pay? How does our disgraceful bottom-tier funding for schools and teacher pay attract businesses and jobs to North Carolina? I just don't get it. As a society, we regard educating our children as a social imperative. It is loathsome to drain critically needed resources from public coffers to subsidize private privilege. In addition to diverting funds, this scheme of incentives. Excuse me, this scheme incentivizes public school desertions. Then if the public schools struggle under the weight of dwindling support, it becomes a self-fulfilling prophecy. I implore you to contact your representatives before tomorrow morning.
Thank you. And that concludes the public comment section of our meeting. We're now at approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Move the item.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Cam and Deborah. Thank you. We are now. Dr. Oakley?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Members of the Board. This evening's consent agenda includes the following items. Approval of July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four, and August thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four meeting minutes. Personnel action report. Heating, ventilation, and air conditioning maintenance contract with Brady Train Services. Heating, ventilation, and air conditioning maintenance contract with Hoffman Mechanical Solutions. And contractual agreements with Bonnet's for the flooring replacement project at the Green Valley Administration Building. That concludes this evening's consent agenda for your consideration.
Thank you. And Mr. Logan has asked that we pull items C and D. So if there is a motion, it will be from items A, B, and E. Is there a motion?
Move the consent agenda for the items that have not been pulled.
Thank you. Second. All right. Diane? Chrissy?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Deborah?
She votes yes.
Okay. And Dina, yes. That passes unanimously. Mr. Logan, items C and D?
Okay, Joyce Michael, little discussion on C and D. And both of those, those are heating and AC issues, correct, within our schools?
Yes.
And both of those are for nine hundred thousand dollars?
Correct.
Okay. And those funds will come out of bond money and general maintenance, correct?
That's correct.
All right. Could you provide why we need to hire outside help? We have an HVAC employees within our system.
Right. Yeah. So we do have HVAC employees. I think we have one that is actually certified to work on equipment and he has three helpers. But we also have several vacancies within our district. And so we utilize our contractors to make those emergency repairs and replacements throughout the school district.
Now, it is correct that when we hire HVAC one person, that we pay them sixteen dollars and seven cents an hour?
Yes, our starting rate that had just been increased with our last pay increase is sixteen dollars an hour.
So when we hire outside help. My understanding is helpers within HVAC are being paid twenty-two to twenty-five dollars an hour.
Right. In the industry, the starting pay is around twenty dollars an hour, but it goes up to forty-five, fifty, sixty dollars an hour.
So the reality is, we are paying twenty dollars plus an hour for employees to fix our HVAC systems.
Correct. We pay their hourly rate plus their overhead and profit.
So regardless of us not paying them, hiring them and paying them, we're still paying the increased rate.
Correct.
So if we actually hired employees at a higher increase in pay, we wouldn't be having to spend these large amounts for these repairs.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Can we just get clarification? Because we were having some head shaking and some head nodding on the funding source. So I think it's a blend of both deferred maintenance and general operational expenditures, just so we're all on the same page about that. Yeah, and I think, I mean, we've talked about what we're doing about it. I think this summer, there was some good work in bringing high school interns in and having them begin to train. We're just not at the scale of the condition that our buildings are in. And so I think we can continue to expand certifications, credentials, and using our own students. But we're crawling out of a deep hole.
We are still at thirteen open positions, correct?
Yes.
Which means we have more need than what we have working.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, Diane?
Okay, if I remember, Madam Superintendent, when you did the budget, did you not have a sheet that showed what we pay? Versus what the market rate is for these? And if I recall, there was almost like a ten-dollar difference in what we've offered and what the market rate is, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
I mean, we're chasing the market, so the number grows over time.
Okay, so we need to understand that though I believe that GCS is a good place to come and work. That if you do the numbers, if I can go to, you know, HVAC, you know, Central and make almost double what I'm making, what I would make here. Where do you think I'm gonna go? So the challenging problem is to get the people who hold our purse strings to understand that, you know. We cannot hire folk if we cannot compete and pay them what, you know, you know, what's out there. I mean, that's, I mean, that's a no-brainer. Okay? The other thing is, is that I think we need to applaud the various internship and apprenticeship programs we have like Gap. And ICT programs that are at least trying to put certified young people or people who are, kids who are interested in these areas. Because the other thing that I have said is I really wish that we would do, if we have the time, whether we do it on the TV channel. Is to actually show what a day in the life is of some of the employees that you don't see. They see the teachers, they see, you know, some staff, but they don't see our tech people. They don't see. And though some of these jobs are not particularly maybe physically attractive, because you got to crawl under things and get dirty and that kind of stuff. If we pay them well enough, they can buy all the soap to wash themselves and go take care of that afterwards. But we have to help encourage young people to realize that these jobs are good-paying jobs. With upward mobility attracted to them so that you don't have to wear a suit and a tie in order to make a good living. And you may enjoy. We have many people who like working with their hands. You know, if you give me a screwdriver, I don't know which end to turn. But for those who know how to do that and want to do that, we should encourage that. So I just wanted to make the point that we're not going to get those thirteen positions hired if we can't pay and promote the folks within.
Ms. Erby would like to say something, I believe.
Okay.
Yes, for Mr. Monk, in regards to the contracts, when people get paid a higher hourly rate, we don't include any type of other benefits with that. Am I correct? We're not responsible for that.
We're not. Their companies typically offer benefits that they pass to us via the price that we pay.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Diane?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes, but I think a lot of very valid points were brought up in discussion.
I agree. Linda?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes, we need to pay and retain employees.
Michael?
Yes.
Kim?
Definitely, yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Thank you. And that passes unanimously. I agree that we certainly need to discuss that pipeline issue. We're now at comments from the chair and I had them here a minute ago. Here we go. Good evening. Guilford County Schools will host a topping-out ceremony for the Visual and Performing Arts Elementary School that's under construction. At the former Peeler Elementary site, a topping-out ceremony is a construction tradition that makes the completion of a building's frame. Attendees will sign the last beam before it is raised and placed onto the school. The ceremony is Thursday, September twelfth at noon. Guilford Education Alliance is hosting Principal for a Day on Wednesday, October second, where volunteers can see firsthand what it takes to run a successful school. This is a great opportunity to connect with the school, the district leaders, ask questions, and meet the people who make our district great. You can sign up at geanc.org. The Choice Showcase returns with a fall edition. The showcase, which highlights each of our more than sixty Choice Schools and Programs, will take place on Wednesday, October sixteenth. From five-thirty to eight PM at the Greensboro Coliseum. This also marks the opening of the Choice Application Window for the twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year, which is from October ninth to November twenty-second. Applicants may apply at gcsnc-schoolment.net. The graduation schedule has been released for the class of twenty-twenty-five. My. We just finished. Thirty ceremonies will take place between May twenty-eighth and June thirteenth. The full schedule can be found on our website at www.gcsnc.com under the calendar section. And finally, September is Attendance Awareness Month and we want to remind all families about the importance of good attendance. Every day is crucial for your child's success. Thank you. And this concludes my remarks. I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Oakley.
Good evening. I do want to welcome all families to the twenty-four, twenty-five school years. I was able to visit six schools on the first day and several since and have been excited to see the engagement and school spirit on display. You can see a recap of the first day's events on YouTube and on the social media channels. Also want to congratulate High Point Central High School, which received this year's Hubert B. Humphrey Junior School Improvement Award. Principal Mike Hattenback and his staff have worked hard to build teacher capacity, positive culture, strong learning environments. To create a space where students feel seen and teachers feel valued. These strategies are paying off with improvements in student proficiency, improvements in discipline, and improvements in community involvement. Given last week's events in Georgia, we also want to remind our students and our community and our parents to, if they see something, to say something. We have continued to invest in many different safety best practices. But also know that some of the most important work that we can do as a community is making sure that all students have a trusted adult in the building. The Celebration of Excellence is happening this month and you're all invited. Mark your calendars for Wednesday, September twenty-fifth, oh, September twenty-fifth at five PM at the Tanger Center for the Performing Arts. Want to be sure to thank our sponsors, Guilford Education Alliance and Shifted, as well as many others for making this event possible. We will recognize the best educators in seven categories, including principal, teacher, assistant principal, rookie teacher, mentor, social worker, and counselor. All are welcome. Please RSVP at the link posted on the website. And speaking of the Celebration of Excellence, please join me in congratulating our top five Principals of the Year. They are Jonathan Brooks at Bessemer Elementary, Jennifer Cooper, Millis Road Elementary, Mike Hattenback at High Point Central High School. Leslie Kennard at Ferndale Middle and Trent Vernon at Jamestown Middle. We look forward to cheering for them and the rest of our talented employees. Finally, tonight, when we talk about excellent employees and the HVAC vacancies and contracts, it's a fitting time. To also talk about the sales tax referendum that will be on the ballot this fall. Voters will vote for or against the proposed fraction of a penny or point two-five percent sales tax for our local schoolteachers and frontline workers. The fraction of a penny amount would equal an additional five pennies on a twenty-dollar purchase. With the tax increase, a large pizza used to pay twenty-one dollars and thirty-five cents for would now cost twenty-one dollars and forty cents. If the sales tax measure passes, the Board of County Commissioners has passed a resolution committing to use the additional revenue. Which counties officials estimate could be more than twenty-five million dollars annually to increase pay for our teachers and our frontline workers. To learn more about how the proceeds would be used, visit gcsnc.com/salestax. And that concludes my remarks. So Dr. Stevens, Dr. Wells, and I will now turn to our accountability report for twenty-three, twenty-four. Also wanted to remind the board and the public that we will also share more details on our work session on September twenty-fourth. When we look a little more closely at student groups and a little bit deeper analysis. So our purpose for this evening's presentation is to provide a high-level review of the GCS's academic progress over the past year. In alignment with our strategic direction focus areas. As I mentioned before, we are going to have a little bit more of a comprehensive review where we're able to do that at our work session on the twenty-fourth. There's lots of data. The accountability model is complex and has lots of layers and also changes over time. We're very proud, though, of the hard work of our teachers and students and staff and principals and principal supervisors and central office staff. And are excited to share our results tonight. We'll also share how supports for our students beyond the classroom are also beginning to have some effect on academic outcomes. As we go through the presentation today, I would like to just emphasize that you're going to see a few things that kind of come up over time. They're important to the discussion and will help us be able to reflect on our progress. But specifically, you'll see examples of how we are performing better today than we were three years ago. We are facing significant budget shortfalls. And we are focused on how we get this improvement, not in pockets, but continuous improvement at scale across the district. We're going to start with how we're accelerating learning. For national context, it's important to know that our whole country is still facing this literacy crisis for students in grades K through three. According, though, to the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, North Carolina students in grades K three are starting to show some progress away from that trend. And you can see that in our district data as well. When you look here on this slide, this is the Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills, also known as DIBELS. We've gotten it for decades here. We noticed that at the beginning of twenty-three, twenty-four, fifty percent of our students in grades K through three started the year behind. But those numbers were reversed and by the end of the year, all student groups showed students testing at or above the benchmark. And you can see that dark gray bar and that shows all students in grades K through three. When we compared the beginning of the year results, you can see that there's double-digit point increases on those early literacy skills. Which does correlate with how students comprehend as they get to that third grade test. Dr. Stevens is now going to talk a little bit more about our overall accountability report and she's going to start with our proficiency progress.
Thank you, Dr. Oakley, and good evening to all of you. It's a pleasure to be before you today. As we look at the twenty-three, twenty-four performance composite results, I want to remind you that the performance composite is the percent proficient on all grades and all tests combined. You can see that from our overall performance composite from the state-required EOG and EOC assessments, we have good news to share. Seventy-seven schools increased their performance composites compared to the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. We increased proficiency for all student groups compared to twenty-two, twenty-three. And thirty-six schools had twenty-three, twenty-four performance composites that were at or above pre-COVID levels in eighteen, nineteen. Up from twenty-eight schools in twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three. Overall, our students are making steady progress since the pandemic disrupted the way students learn. Next, I'll share with you the EOG results. We are excited to celebrate our progress in math, because when compared to the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. The math proficiency at grades three through eight increased for each student group and at every grade level. The only exception was the English learner student group. Additionally, there were sixty-two schools whose math proficiency improved. And six middle schools had increases greater than twenty-five percentage points on the grade eight Math one EOC. Our math recovery efforts are continuing to show positive changes. When compared to the state, we are recovering at a faster rate in math in grades three through eight for all students and by all student groups. And also for our students with disabilities and our economically disadvantaged students are doing better than what they did in twenty-eighteen, nineteen. When reading this graph, the blue line represents the state of North Carolina and the teal line represents our data. In this case, the shorter line is better than the longer line and an indication of faster recovery. Because the goal is to get to zero, which is the marker for the twenty-eighteen, nineteen pre-pandemic year. When examining our EOG reading results by school, grade level, and student groups, we also had areas to celebrate. We saw an increase overall at grades three, five, and six. Grade three reading had the largest increase among the grades. We also had fifty- We also had fifty-one schools increase their reading proficiency compared to the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, including thirty-seven elementary schools, twelve middle schools, and two of our specialty schools. When examining our E O G. science results by school, grade level, and student groups, we saw an increase in grade-five science overall for all student groups, with the exception of our Hispanic and E L. students. We also had forty-one elementary schools increase or remain above ninety-five percent on their fifth-grade science E O G. proficiency, and eleven middle schools increased their grade-eight science E O G. proficiency. Next up are the results from the End-of-Course Assessments. We increased proficiency across three out of the four E O G. E O C. assessments. These include high-school Math One, Math Three, and Biology. All student groups, including English learners and students with disabilities, increased proficiency in both Math One and Math Three in twenty-three, twenty-four. Here, as you can see, the gray bars represent the previous years, starting with the twenty-eighteen, nineteen school year, and the blue bar is the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. You can see the increases for all but one of the E O Cs compared to twenty-two, twenty-three. Math Three had the largest increase in proficiency in twenty-three, twenty-four compared to the other E O C. assessments, and continues to surpass pre-pandemic rates. English Two was the only E O C. that had a small decrease of less than one percentage As a reminder, the current weighting for calculating school performance grades, or the S P G., is still eighty percent performance and twenty percent growth. We have mentioned for years that this weighting is not balanced, and the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction and the North Carolina General Assembly are still working on revisions to address this imbalanced model. They are revising the state accountability measures to align more with the whole child and workforce development skills. So far, you've heard a lot about the proficiency, which represents the eighty percent performance portion of the state's school performance grade formula. So now I'm going to share more about the twenty percent growth portion. Academic growth indicates the progress students in the school made over the previous year. The standard is roughly equivalent to one year's worth of expected growth for a year of instruction students experience during a typical school year. Growth is reported for each school as exceeded, met, or not met, and is reported in E V O S., which stands for Education Value Added Assessment System. That's the tool adopted by North Carolina to help demonstrate measures of growth. For twenty-three, twenty-four, G C S. had ninety-two schools to either meet or exceed growth, which is more schools than in twenty-eighteen, nineteen, the pre-pandemic year, and an increase of seventeen schools compared to the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. The number of schools not meeting growth has steadily declined. We dropped from fifty-five in twenty-one, twenty-two to forty in twenty-two, twenty-three, to twenty-three schools in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, which is close to a fifty percent decline. Despite the imbalanced school grading model, we made progress this past school year. Our school performance grades improved, with more schools in the A category and fewer schools in the F category. The steady progress we are seeing in proficiency and growth is reflected in the school performance grades. As I mentioned earlier, N C D P I. and the North Carolina General Assembly are continuing to work on a revision of the accountability model. In the latest release of the revised plan shared with us in May of twenty-twenty-four, the model was proposed to change from eighty percent performance and twenty percent growth to fifty percent performance, thirty percent growth, and twenty percent other factors, which are still being determined. We expect to learn more about the final changes to the accountability model during this school year. In North Carolina, a school is designated as low-performing if it receives a school performance grade of a D. or F. and does not meet expected, and does not exceed expected growth. This year, we had seven schools that moved out of low-performance status. In fact, for the past three years, the number of low-performance schools has decreased. We declined from fifty-nine or fifty-point-nine percent in twenty-one, twenty-two to fifty-one schools or forty-four-point-three percent in twenty-two, twenty-three to forty-three or thirty-seven-point-four percent in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. That's a thirteen-point-five percent drop when compared to the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Again, we are making progress. I will now share the results from the four-year cohort graduation rates. Following a national trend, G C S. saw an increase in the cohort graduation rate for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, reaching a record level of ninety-two-point-two, which indicates we are moving in the right direction. Every student group increased its graduation rate compared to the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, and Black and Hispanic students, in addition to students with disabilities and English learners, marked the highest graduation rates G C S. has ever had. We are happy to report that G C S. had ten schools with a graduation rate of a hundred percent, and twelve of our schools had graduation rates of ninety percent or higher. For most of the past ten years, G C S. has consistently had a higher graduation rate than the state and other large school districts in North Carolina, and that trend continues. Our rate of ninety-two-point-two is higher than the state's rate of eighty-six-point-nine, as well as all of the other large districts in North Carolina. We are continuing with strategies for increasing graduation rates, including learning hubs, which provide meals, transportation, and flexible schedules in all comprehensive high schools. Our student attendance recovery efforts include principals, school counselors, social workers, interpreters, and teachers canvassing neighborhoods to recover students who are not attending school. We are going to keep repeating the message that we need and want all of our students in school. We will continue to offer a fifth quarter beyond the traditional school year for students failing the course, giving them the opportunity to improve to a passing grade to meet graduation requirements. Finally, processes are in place to audit student transcripts to ensure that they are meeting the graduation requirements. For three years in a row, students who attended the learning hubs had higher graduation rates than those who did not. A deeper dive into the graduation rate analysis showed that students who attended learning hubs have a twenty-nine percent increased probability of graduating. So the data consistently showed that our learning hubs aren't just a good idea, they are a good investment. While tutoring and learning hubs are making a difference, we must also consider the impact of the sunsetting of ESER funding. Just last year, the cost of high-dosis tutoring increased from three million to eight million dollars. Because we doubled the number of students, we were tutoring and tripled the number of tutoring sessions. We will need to identify ways to continue providing these supports that students are accessing and that are making an impact on learning and life outcomes. Next, we would discuss other performance indicators, which include A C T. proficiency for eleventh graders, A C T. work keys for C T E. concentrators, and English language progress for our E L. students. It is important to note that the A C T. has not been required for application to the U N C. system, college, or university since the pandemic, but the U N C. Board of Governors approved a revised policy in May of twenty-twenty-four. For students entering college this year, twenty-four, twenty-five, an A C T. score was not required. For students entering college in twenty-five, twenty-six, if their weighted GPA is between two-point-five and two-point-eight, they must submit an A C T. score, but a minimum score is not required. For students entering college in twenty-six, twenty-seven, if their weighted GPA is between two-point-five and two-point-eight, they must have an A C T. score of seventeen or higher. In G C S., the overall, the overall A C T. average for us is seventeen-point-three, which is a slight decline from the twenty-two, twenty-three average of seventeen-point-five. All twelfth-grade C T E. concentrators take the A C T. work keys assessment in an effort to earn A C T. work keys National Career Readiness Certificates, which is an assessment-based, I'm sorry, which is an assessment-based credential issued at four levels, platinum, gold, silver, and bronze. This credential measures and certifies the essential work skills needed for success in jobs across industries and occupations. On the A C T. work keys assessment, fifty-eight-point-five percent of G C S. twelfth-grade C T E. concentrators scored at the silver or higher level, which is based on their performance on three assessments, three assessments, applied math, graphic literacy, and workplace documents. Over the last four years, we have increased industry-recognized credentials from two-thousand-nine-hundred-sixty-six to ten-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy-eight. That's a two-hundred-and-sixty-three percent increase over four years. In twenty-three, twenty-four, G C S. students took over ten thousand college courses. We would like to see that number increase this year. The benefits to students include earning college credits while still in high school and reducing the time and cost of obtaining a degree. Dual college enrollment also exposes students to the rigor and expectations of college, increasing their chances of college success. Not only does it benefit students, there is also a benefit to our schools and community. Students in career and technical education, or C T E., dual enrollment programs offer, often gain industry certifications, making them more employable upon graduation. Dual enrollment can help prepare students for in-demand careers and contribute to a stronger local economy. Now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Wells.
Good evening. You've heard a lot about our successes. Now let's discuss how we continue what works to accelerate learning even more. We see positive results from the recovery efforts we have implemented and are committed to continuing what we know is working. As a reminder, our learning recovery efforts are based on three principles: expanding learning time, high dosage tutoring, acceleration, not remediation, and that means making sure students have access to grade-level content. As we have mentioned before, we prioritize high dosage tutoring in our schools, because we know it works. Continuing learning recovery efforts matter. Over the last two years, we've tripled the number of students served to over seventeen thousand, for a total of more than two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand hours, and increased the number of sessions to almost half a million high dosage tutoring, high dosage tutoring sessions, which is up from one-hundred-and-nine-thousand in twenty-one, twenty-two. This year, we will provide high dosage tutoring in literacy for grades K. three and math for grades six, eight. High school students will be supported through the learning hubs. Due to declining funding sources and because of ESER ending, the learning hubs were scaled back in twenty-three, twenty-four, with all schools only offering them twice per week compared to four days per week previously, and we reduced the availability of transportation home from the hubs. Learning hubs saw a twenty-nine percent decline in students participating in twenty-three, twenty-four, not because kids aren't still coming to the learning hubs, but because we had to reduce the availability from four days to two days. Despite the learning hubs serving fewer students, we see the same positive trends as we have in the past with student attendance. It is important to remember that students who are invited to attend learning hubs have one or more risk factors for not meeting graduation requirements, including not demonstrating proficiency on one or more tests, or a history of chronic absenteeism, among others. Results are showing that our learning hubs are paying dividends. The more students visit learning hubs, the more they show up for school, and you can see that data very clearly here. And all of us in education know how closely linked attendance and achievement are. We offer twenty-one C T E. middle school courses within eleven pathways and three-hundred-and-six high school courses, offering fifty-six pathways to our high school students. We are committed to providing career and technology education to all of our students in every middle and high school and beyond, with sixty-seven pathways offered. C T E. pathway offerings are at all of our high schools and middle schools. Last year, almost twenty-five thousand students in middle schools and high schools participated in C T E. We've talked a lot about the academic supports we provide students and how they are making a difference. We know that the non-academic supports are just as important for all of our students to thrive in school. Outside the classroom, we are also making significant progress in supporting the well-being of our students. Last year, we created a model that integrates our many health initiatives, from nurses in schools to telehealth and mental health services. School-based telehealth is now available at fourteen elementary schools. In the last year, we completed one-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty virtual visits. Our telehealth program is having a positive impact in addressing chronic absenteeism. So what does that mean? We know that chronic absenteeism drastically increased after the pandemic. In our district, it nearly doubled. However, in elementary schools, it increased from seven percent to twenty-eight percent. This means nearly one in three students missed more than ten days of school. When students are not doing well physically and emotionally, they do not perform at the same level as when they are well. We have two schools that have had telehealth for over a year. While it is still too early to fully measure the impact of telehealth for those two schools, we have seen chronic absenteeism decline between thirteen percent and twenty-three percent. We are conducting a more in-depth evaluation to analyze the impact telehealth is having on chronic absenteeism, but it takes three to five years to fully evaluate a program. Overall, our chronic absenteeism rates have dropped for a second straight year, falling below twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, but remaining higher than rates prior to the pandemic. Attendance matters, and we need our students to attend school on a regular basis. We are also continuing our mental health services and have become a national thought leader in this area. We are implementing nearly twenty million dollars to support mental health services. Last year, we served more than one thousand students in over nine thousand sessions. Now I will turn it back to Dr. Oakley.
Thank you. As you can see, lots happening, lots of moving parts, and we are making good progress, but at the same time, we do know that there are challenges ahead of us. We've talked a lot about this, and it continues, but Guilford County Schools, like many districts across our country, have seen a downward trend in enrollment for the last several years, and we've seen that be exacerbated by the pandemic. When we think about what that means for us, it means that every time a student leaves us, charter school funding increases and our school funding and our teacher allotments decrease. Since the pandemic, charter school, state, and local funds have increased by more than thirty-six million dollars, which means really right now that we give charter schools about a hundred million dollars each year, which could be going to our schools. Secondly, America's schools have started to make progress getting students back on track, but improvement is often slow and uneven across states and economic groups and student groups, with millions of students, often those who are facing systemic inequities before the pandemic, making up little or no or inconsistent ground. Nationally, students make up one-third of their pandemic losses in math this past school year and one-quarter of their losses in reading, and that's according to this Education Recovery Scorecard, which is which is just a combination of state and national results by researchers at Harvard and Stanford. And we're seeing some of those same challenges here. While we're making progress, it's in, sometimes it's slow or it's inconsistent in a few grade levels. And additionally, there continues to be a gap between our students of color and our white, their white peers and with students with disabilities and our English learner student groups. Challenge number three, we've discussed a little bit. Um, we're seeing slight declines in chronic absenteeism, but we're still concerned that close to one in three students is missing ten or more days from school. When students miss that many days, it becomes very challenging to ensure that they receive the instruction that they missed and catch up. Students need to be in school to receive the instruction needed to ensure their academic success. We've talked a lot about concentrated poverty over time in our community, and that is the challenge listed here. This is evident when we compare the number and percent of schools and the largest North Carolina districts that are approved to be the Community Eligibility Provision Schools for twenty-four, twenty-five. As a point of comparison, Wake County Public Schools has twenty-one percent designated CEP schools. Charlotte Mecklenburg has sixty-three percent, and Guilford County has ninety-two percent. The number of schools GCS has participating in CP, CEP is higher than other large districts. This provision, of course, is the one that provides free breakfast and free lunch for all students in the school. Here on this map, you can see that the darker blue areas indicate higher concentrations of poverty across our county. And as you can see on the map, GCS schools with CEP status are now also located in almost every area of the school district. While our twenty-four accountability results are often compared with the other large districts, we also need to make sure that we recognize that we're not playing on the same field. Um, when we think about the poverty that our families continue to face, most of these trends have held even since pre-pandemic. So child poverty has been higher in Guilford compared to the state, Weclin, Mecklenburg, um, Wake and Durham since pre-pandemic, since eighteen nineteen. Food insecurity remains higher in Guilford County compared to Wake, Mecklenburg, Forsyth, and Durham counties since pre-pandemic. Medium family income is also lower than the state, Wake, Mecklenburg, and Durham since before the pandemic, and the percentage of stu- of residents that has a bachelor's degree um, has also been lower, which speaks to these systemic inequities that have held true over time and do impact how students perform. We also know that the lack and the sunset of ESER funds is approaching and is upon us, and so we've had to make sure that we prioritize funding to continue what's working. You saw tonight some data that proves that this high dosage tutoring and the Learning Hubs are working for students. We also know that caring for the whole child by providing those mental health services is something that students are taking advantage of, and of course, investing in safety and technology, making sure teachers have access to technology that they need to meet the needs of students. So just a few district highlights before we open up for questions. Here you can see the highlights from the early literacy and the EOG assessments. Um, remembering that every student group saw those gains in early literacy. On the next slide, um, you can see math proficiency has in, continued to increase for every student group and every grade level with the exception of English learners, and we are showing math recovery faster than the pace of the state. Reading proficiency, though, did increase at all grade levels and for black students, students with disabilities, and English learners, and then, of course, increases in three of four EOCs. We're very proud of students, teachers, and district leaders who worked really hard to help students get to this point and improve their growth. We still have pockets that we absolutely need to continue working on. We're also excited that the twenty-three, twenty-four cohort graduation rate of ninety-two point two is the highest we've seen, and many of those graduates took at least one college course or earned a CTE credential or met the UNC system GPA minimum requirement. So the commitment remains the same as we move forward into the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and that's to accelerate learning for all students, to make sure that we're recruiting, retaining, and rewarding our staff, particularly those that work directly with students and those that keep our buildings running in a district this size, maintaining health, safe and healthy schools, including the mental health supports, which are desperately needed, and preparing students for the world. So as we kind of move forward, we know that we are performing consistently um, in a, in a, a better way than we were in this place three years ago. Um, we have the highest graduation rate in the district's history. We have a thirteen point five percentage point decline in our low-performing schools. One-third of our schools are performing at or above where they were pre-pandemic. Two thousand five hundred twenty-eight more industry-recognized credentials compared to last year, and we had students taking more than ten thousand college classes last year. Despite the lack of increases in the local teacher supplement over the past two years in a row and the lack of increase in the state teacher supplement for three years in a row, teachers are still showing up to make academic progress with students. Also, despite the state removing all guardrails for private school vouchers, many of them religious private schools and charter schools and taking money out of public schools, we remain the business in town that takes all kids every single day. And I think that's important for us to remember. And despite our wages trailing behind industry wages, which we talked about earlier, uh, our staff continues to show up for kids, pick them up, take them home, feed them meals um, so that they can focus, and our staff remain here, and we're grateful for them. But we do have to remain focused on continuous improvement at scale for all student groups. We've made progress, but we're not there yet. We know that if children come to school regularly, we will see progress. Um, we also know that the data show that students are making progress, but they have to show up for school in order for that to happen. We also have to make sure that we fairly compensate our teachers and our frontline workers who play such a critical role every single day. They show up to prepare students to exceed despite challenges um, from learning loss to school safety to mental health, and our employees do that because they care about kids, which is why, um, while it's not an accountability measure, it's important to remember um, and for our community to be sure that we inform ourselves of the upcoming Sales Tax Referendum for our local schoolteachers and frontline workers. You're either going to vote for or against increasing the local sales tax by a fraction of a penny or point two-five percent. If the sales tax passes, our commissioners have passed a resolution to use the additional revenue to increase pay for our teachers and our frontline workers. We've talked about how that impacts us, about five pennies on twenty dollars. Many surrounding counties, many people don't know, have done this already, gone from six point seven five to seven percent, including Forsyth, Davidson, Randolph, and Rockingham, very similar tax referendum. The proposed fraction of a penny sales tax does exclude essential everyday items like prescriptions and gas and groceries. It does apply to visitors, though, which I think is really important for us to remember to tell other people. Recently, a growing number of visitors have come to Guilford County. We had the Folk Festival last weekend. We have events at the Tanger Center, we have the Furniture Market, we have the Wyndham Championship, we have some homecomings coming up. Um, people come here, right? So share the love, um, just to name a few. But those events last year generated one point six billion dollars in revenue. So when we think about the county's estimate that the sales tax could generate additional twenty-five million, that's a big deal. So I do think it's important to remember that it's up to all of us. In November, we want to make sure that when voters go, they go informed. And for more information, again, you can see gcsnc.com/saltstax. Again, this was high level. We're going to go a little bit deeper at our work session, particularly with student groups um, later on in the month, I think it's September twenty-fourth. And with that, we'll open up for questions.
Thank you. Chrissy?
First of all, I want to say thank you to everybody who put this report together. Um, for those of you who don't know, this information came out from the state last week, and so this is a really fast turnaround to pull together all of this data and get it ready to present to us here. So thank you very much for, um, for your hard work on that. I do have, um, a couple of kind of general questions. Back on page thirty-three, uh, where it talks about CTE by the numbers, we've gone from credentials earned in twenty-twenty-one to about three thousand up to this past school year, almost eleven thousand credentials earned, which is a massive increase. And I'd love to know just kind of what, what the cause is behind that increase. How have we managed to have such growth in that?
So I can't, I don't think we can all take credit for all of it, although we do have a stellar CTE group and department who's pushing hard, um, to make sure that kids know what they have access to. We've done a better job at exposing kids in middle school. Um, so they kind of, it's not this, you know, they, they have more information when they, when they go in to be able to earn their credentials. I don't think we could pretend that the twenty-two, um, graduation requirement, so students can do more of this kind of thing, they have more time in their schedule because they're only required to have the twenty-two, uh, credit hours to graduate. We have a community college in three cities. So we have Greensboro, Jamestown, and High Point, which other people don't necessarily have. We have lots of rural districts who don't have access to that. Um, we do still have some barriers, though, because most of the students who go drive themselves. So we're trying to work with the cities and the counties to be able to transport students because the students who are able to access that are mostly providing their own transportation. And the last one is, oh, um, it offers the same five GPA points as an AP course. So you can go get the quality points and not take the AP exam.
That's a nice incentive.
Right. Um, and so I just think kids are smart, parents, you know, word has spread. We were with ESER able to pay for books and fees. And so I think we might see a decline when we're not able to do that, but we also have some philanthropic partners who are interested in helping us cover that cost as well as alleviate the transportation barrier. I might have left out a reason, but those are my hypotheses on that one.
That's fantastic, and it's just, it's such a drastic increase that I wanted to kind of dig into what's the root cause behind that. Um, the next thing I had a question about is, can you clarify for the public what the difference is between high dosage tutoring and Learning Hubs? We hear a lot about both of them.
It's because of the two things that we have data to show are working, but they cost a lot of money. Um, that's why we keep talking about them. But the difference would be, um, that the high dosage tutoring occurs with regu- regular frequency, uh, three to five times a week with a duration of over twenty minutes. So if it's not high dosage, it doesn't have the same ba- data backing. Um, and then that has been, we've been able to do that at scale across subject areas, across grade spans. The Learning Hubs is simply flexible evening hours at high school, so two nights a week at the high school. This year, we'll be able to do tutoring in early literacy and middle school math, but we're not going to be able to offer during the day tutoring in, in high schools, but we will have tutors that work at the Learning Hubs. We will also have the virtual helpline available for all students who might need tutoring or need help with a homework assignment.
And for the, the tutoring and the Learning Hubs, where is the material coming from that's being used? Are we using some sort of set content? Are we working just with a student brings in their homework or there are unfinished assignments from class? How are we making sure that they're getting the proper kinds of, of instructional support?
So it's supposed to be more than just homework help. Um, it's supposed to be designed to fill in those individual skill gaps. And so one of the things I think that has worked here and has paid off is that we've stuck to our curriculum so that the tutors are trained on our curriculum and they were paid to work with teachers thirty minutes a week to plan for the next week. And so it's not just like the Wild West of what we're going to do with our tutoring time. It's aligned to the curriculum, it meets grade-level content, and it's in conjunction with the classroom teacher.
Okay, and I have one other thing, which is, I, this one isn't really a question. It's just something I wa- wanted to bring attention to. Um, the chronic absenteeism is, is terrible, and this is not just a GCS problem. This is a national problem. Um, we look at the numbers, you know, in, in twenty-eighteen, we had ten percent of our students who were falling into that chronic absenteeism category, and this past year at thirty-one percent, even though that's a decline from the past two years. That's still a third of our kids who are falling into that category. And I just wanted to like spell out the math here that what defines chronic absenteeism is ten percent of the days enrolled. Our days enrolled are a hundred eighty days approximately. That's eighteen days that students are missing to fall into that category. And so we're saying that a third of our kids are missing eighteen days worth of instruction. We have five days in a school week, and that's three and a half weeks of instruction that students are missing. And so it is, it's so critical for parents to get their kids to school to make sure they're coming. It's critical for kids to be coming to school. And thank you to the social workers, the principals, the teachers, everybody who's reaching out within the community to reach out to those students who aren't coming to school. But I see this as one of our huge, huge challenges as a school system. Kids can't learn if they're not in school to learn, so that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Michael, then Kim.
Okay, um, page seventeen. You probably will have to go to the page. Uh, HS Math One. Math One's normally taught in what grade level?
It depends. Um, I mean, eighth and ninth grade.
Eighth or ninth grade, so HS Math One would be students that had either didn't take it in middle school or failed it in middle school and taken it in high school.
Yeah, that, yes, there's no longer bank scores from middle school reported in the high school accountability numbers.
So these are either students that didn't take it then or failed it then.
This would be students who are taking Math One in their ninth grade year and taking the test in their ninth grade year.
Okay. Lot of pages here. Y'all really worked hard on this. Learning hubs and attendance. For the students that attend Learning Hubs, are we requiring, and we just discussed, or about chronic absenteeism. Are we requiring students to attend Learning Hubs? Do we have an attendance policy that requires students to attend school?
You can't enforce, I mean, they're after-school hours. Um, so students who have jobs, for example, we wouldn't be able to force to attend.
In the past, we used to put a requirement if you miss so many days that you received an incomplete.
But we're not requiring them to attend Learning Hubs, if that's the question. I mean, I think we can certainly look at our attendance policy, which we've talked about.
So, and, and that's what I'm trying to focus on. We, we have an attendance problem, but we're not requiring students to attend the school. If we're not enforcing students to attend school, the number of those absences at thirty percent chronic absenteeism, how many of them are unexcused?
Yeah, I mean, it depends, of course, and it also depends on notes and reporting and some other things that come along, um, that invite some variance there.
And I just really think that we need to focus on the requirement that students have to attend school to pass the classes. Uh, because in the reality is, that improves the class, that improves performance. Um, students that are chronically absent may be smart enough to get by, to pass the test, but they're not going to be excelling. If we would require them to attend school, which means puts consequences of missing school, I think it would improve the whole system overall. On the mental health cert-
Required by law, but Learning Hubs are not part of the regular school day. So Learning Hub, the school system cannot require students to attend a Learning Hub, but by law, students are required to attend school.
Under sixteen, I do understand that. But previously, if a student hit that fourth absence in a semester class in a block school, they got an incomplete on their report card. And that was not cleared up unless they made up the time. Uh, no, I understand that. But what I'm trying to do is require students to attend school and make up time. Just think that is something that we need to look at. It will improve performance. On the mental health services. We had one thousand fifty-one students receiving the services. In those cases, did we have con- parents contacted that they were rece- receiving services?
Yes, parent consent is required for those.
Because I knew that, I know that one was going to be asked me after the meeting. That's it.
All right, thank you. Kim?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I appreciate the, um, presentation. Some of my questions, I think, were kind of like answered, but I am concerned about, um, the chronic absenteeism. And just for clarity, just because students could make up time, it still wouldn't erase the absence. Am I correct? Am I correct?
That's correct.
Right, so it would still come up in our data as chronic absenteeism.
Correct.
Okay, um, how much does it cost to actually operate, um, a learning hub? At one school?
Well, it depends on the number of days a week, the number of students who attend, and the amount of buses needed to run and the staff needed to employ. But, I mean, we can certainly give a case study. We've allotted one point six million for this coming school year to operate two days a week in comprehensive high schools.
Two days a week?
Yes, most Tuesday, Thursday, a couple of high schools found better results on Monday, Wednesday.
Right, okay, and then, okay, I'll, I don't know how many high schools we have, but it's okay.
Fifteen comprehensive high schools.
Fifteen comprehensive. Never mind, I won't ask that question. Are learning hubs an opportunity for test prep? Like, could we, could students have access to like ACT or SAT prep as well?
Yes, and they've seen some examples of that work. Um, so they, we have had some schools who have done that.
Okay, um, and can you just give me an example of what, um, the, the strategy of access to grade level content? I heard Dr. Wells mentioned that as one of the strategies.
Yeah, I think, um, several years ago, um, we were following the research about what works, and it was when this board took on the, um, adoption of high-quality instructional materials and investment in professional learning. And a lot of it had to do with this report that was released called "The Opportunity Myth", that showed that, um, in many, many cases, schools, predominantly schools with black and brown students, were not getting access to grade level content. I think something like eighty-one percent were getting, um, access to remedial content. So an example would be multiplication flashcards in a high school Math One class. Don't work, don't help kids. Um, and so access to grade level content means leveling the playing field and taking out the risk that students won't have access to grade level content, whether it's because of a bias or that somebody's Googling what to teach the next day. And so I think this board, um, took a stand and invested heavily, particularly in literacy and math, starting back in twenty-sixteen, um, for ensuring that there was a viable curriculum and that all students would have access to grade level content. So of course, we, it's not perfect, we have fidelity issues and pacing and all of that, but I think that, that's what the research says works.
And yeah, and just to let you know that sometimes our parents, um, they contribute to the absenteeism. I know often, well, sometimes, they actually go on vacation, um, during the school year and in the beginning of the school year, so that's a real choice as well, that impacts the absenteeism rate. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty.
I don't have a question, just have a couple of comments. Um, looking at the data that has been, um, discussed, Guilford County School did a awesome job and should be commended, um, from the school level on up. I will say that I'm not sure how this can be done, but if somewhere or another, we need to figure out, um, or talk someone from deep pockets, because it's definitely important that we keep the tutoring and the high dosage tutoring. And I know since our ESSR money, um, has dwindled or faded out in the month, um, I know we would not have that money, but we have shown that it works. And if you can't see it, it's something wrong. So the community sometime asks the question, what do you need? What do you need? This right here is an example of what we need, and I'm hoping that somebody or someones will step up and, um, try to help us to retain and keep the high dosage tutoring, uh, in the learning hub. And yes, we do need to work on attendance. I'm not sure what creative ways we need to, uh, work on this, but somehow or another, we do need to work on our student attendance and probably staff attendance also. Thank you.
All right, um, no more questions?
I just have a comment as well. I just want to thank Dr. Oakley and our staff and everybody in this district that makes school happen every single day, our teachers, our bus drivers, our nutritional, um, staff, our maintenance folks, just everybody that's working so hard. We're facing and have faced unfunded mandates, defunding of public education, undervaluing and underpaying, um, all of our, um, people who are part of Guilford County Schools and just up against the, the decisions that are made that are out of our control in the city and the county around housing and, um, you know, just, uh, funding and all kinds of things. And so, um, this is so promising, and I know that it's, um, it's a moving target. I know there's a whole lot of things that are happening at one time, and, um, people are doing, um, just above and beyond the call of, of duty. The chronic absenteeism is, I think, another complex thing, because, you know, a lot of people are, so many more people are working remotely. I mean, after the, the pandemic, uh, you know, people that, um, you know, across a continuum of professions are working remotely, and if your child's like, has the sniffles, or if you've got a meeting, or, or anything could, um, you know, could spark that. And so I know that the GCS flex, um, you know, I know that you've talked about that, it was also in the paper. It's just one of the creative ways, trying to figure out how to address that. I don't think it's one thing, um, because, uh, as Kim said, there's vacations, there's work schedules, there's this new remote culture, and probably a whole lot of other things. I know at Wiley, um, years ago, I don't know if you remember, but we've mentioned it several times, um, one of the teachers was trying to figure out why, um, um, that her students weren't doing well with their sight words, and what she realizes is that when it rained in the morning and they were walkers, that they didn't come to school until either it stopped raining, or they didn't come on the days it rained, because the mother had an infant at home, or that they were walkers. Uh, their family had an infant at home. And so, um, that was really interesting. I know Dr. Kennedy probably can help us find that, but those are the kind of things that are going on as well. And so, um, it's just not a, a thing, one thing, it's, it's multiple things. So, um, I certainly will be thinking about, um, ways at the community level that people can get involved and try to figure out, if you can get us some data on, I don't know, um, if, if people fill out surveys or if the schools have contact, I'm sure they've contacted people, if they're giving any sort of consistent themes around why, um, you know, and there are schools I know that might show greater absenteeism than other schools. If we can just sort of get an overview of that, I know with all of the, uh, legal protections and things like that, but if we can figure out, um, you know, just some pattern that, um, communities can help with or other organizations, that would be an additional thing into the things that you all are thinking. But, um, but I know we've got gaps and they're still big. Um, but, um, it was really good to see in this climate and after what public schools have faced a report like this, so thank you, and thank you all.
All right, well, if that's it, we are at Board Member Comments. Um, and I will start with you, Mr. Logan.
Thank you, what a great time this is. Being an educator, and there has been a lot of discussion over cellphone policy. There is a policy within Guilford County Schools. And for that policy to work, it's going to take members on this board to back Dr. Oakley up, and it's going to take Dr. Oakley to back the principals in the schools up, and it's going to take the principals and administration to back the teachers up. But there is a policy, and I'll read it, it's Rule one dash six under Student Code of Conduct. Devices or applications during instructional time. Students may not use any electronic device or personal entertainment device during instructional time unless authorized by the classroom teacher or other school personnel with supervision responsibilities during the instructional time. Further, students are prohibited from using electronic devices in an unauthorized manner, including but not limited to playing games, sending messages, and browsing websites unless authorized by the classroom teacher or school personnel with supervision responsibilities during instructional time. In addition to other disciplinary interventions, any device used in violation of this policy may be confiscated and only returned to the student's parents or caregiver. So if we will back our system up, we have a cellphone policy, we just need to enforce it. Thank you.
Thank you. Betty?
Thank you. Um, thank you very much. As for, as my principals, I was invited to six schools, um, for open house. I attended all six with seven different session, because one of my schools have an elementary in the middle, so I went to them twice, they were happy to see me, thank you. D nine, um, was at Rankin Elementary School on the first day of school. Um, that divine nine Greek, or, um, fraternities and sororities. So we welcomed the students to Rankin School on the first day, and we had a wonderful time. To the retirees, um, they gave a promise that after six months, that they'll be coming back to assist us in any way possible. So we are now probably with some of them, maybe at the six-month mark. So I know that Dr. Morrison is looking for your phone call sometime tomorrow, anytime between eight and five. Um, I think Princess Mirrorhead, this is a little sweet girl who sent me a bookmark, and it says, "Stay Sweet." I think this is the cutest thing ever, and I just had to show it. So Princess Mirrorhead mailed it to me, and I said, "Thank you very much to you." Don't forget, I need to see every face that's in here now at the VPA Topping Ceremony on Thursday at twelve o'clock, and now I see who you are, and I hope to see you there. Um, the sales tax, I am one for the sales tax, because it, it supports our staff certified and classified. And all these people that's coming into this city, um, of course, Dr. Oakley mentioned the game, but I would just say G-hole, because that is a homecoming, G-hole. So we talking about G-hole, we talking about Tanger, we talking about the furniture market and all those things. But I think G-hole bring almost, um, more than the furniture market is not, is very close, because they come from everywhere here just to celebrate. And thank you all once again for all the work that you do on a daily basis. You all are tremendous. Um, I know I send emails out sometime on weekends, I don't expect an email back on weekend, but sometime I do receive one. So, um, I thank you all for all you do and all you're going to do on the future, and just keep plugging in and helping us out, um, because we know that our students are growing. The performance level is showing, so as long as we keep working together. The thing is, better together, Dr. Oakley, better together. Thank you very much.
Pastor.
Uh, celebrating with all of you a successful start to the school year. Uh, everything that we heard in tonight's accountability report, thank you so much, staff, for the excellent work and turnaround on that. Um, the soaring rising graduation rates, which are yet still not as high as we will work for them to be. Uh, but this is such, uh, an example of the incredible leadership from all of our educators and our staff, and reminds us that it is success enjoyed despite the fact, uh, that down the road, the effort continues to systematically undermine our, our schools. Uh, I want to say I appreciate the comments tonight from all of our speakers from the floor that reminded us of what's happening in Raleigh with the school voucher program. And I appreciate being part of a board that is multi-partisan and politically diverse, and yet, uh, believes in keeping public money working for our schools. Especially in a state where supportive public schools ranks among the worst in the nation. Christopher Russo, who's considered the architect of the manufactured conflict over critical race theory, y'all remember that? Um, has said that the foundation of universal school choice is universal public school distrust. Uh, that is, to undermine, underfund, ultimately erode public trust in our schools, to strangle public education, and then have the audacity to tell people that it died. And is this not an outcome of the school vouchers that so concern us, which take public money to support private education? While presented as a means of expanding options for all, um, all children, in actuality, more than half of the families that will get taxpayer-funded voucher money make over a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a year, including eighteen percent who make over two hundred and fifty-nine thousand a year. And of the two hundred most voucher-funded private schools, they received seventy-five percent of the total funding distributed last year. Uh, ninety percent are religiously affiliated, eighty-nine percent are able to discriminate in admissions based on faith, disability, or sexual identity. Fewer than half are accredited, two percent require state teaching certification, which is required for all public school teachers. Uh, this is what our legislature is doing, instead of meaningful pay increase for our teachers, investments in capital and infrastructure, boosting opportunity and morale. Um, and we might remember that this program of vouchers has its roots in segregation and can also lead people to be reluctant to raise taxes to fund their public schools. This is an offense to us as citizens. Our state constitution, remember, says that there is an inherent link between making suitable provision for free public schools and the preservation of our rights and our liberties as a free people. Undermining our public schools is the undermining of our very democracy. And since many of these schools are religious, I want to make this point in closing. Uh, this policy seemingly means to appeal to religious people. Religion is a means of pursuit of the common good, and it should be said that this does not reflect the tenants of any religion that I know. And as a Christian pastor in another part of my life, let me just say, uh, it is not at all Christian. Let's keep public money in public schools.
Thank you, Linda.
I have to follow that.
You got it.
Well, I'm always simple. Um, there again, I appreciate all the principals, the staff that have started this year off on the right foot. I look forward to all the great work that we're going to see in the future. I know that we will continue to build on our successes and that we will, um, wrap our arms around our children and do the best we can. I will say that absenteeism, you can't teach a child if they're not in school. And I always fought with the EVOS data, that that is not taken into consideration. Because when you have a critically, I mean, we're talking eighteen, but some children are even out much more than that, and that, that their, their atten- their grades and their, uh, lack of growth is included in that EVOS data anyway. So I'm bringing that up because it is such a critical, it impacts your, your grade performance. I don't know if everybody understands that, but I used to have a little debate with one of our few, our principals, and if he's sitting out there, he knows who he is, about the deviation and all that stuff that goes into EVOS. But, um, it, attendance impacts us in multiple ways that not everyone's aware. So anyway, I'm looking forward to a great year, I know we got a great staff, and here we go. Thank you.
Thank you, Chrissy.
As I, I think I've mentioned before, I, I really hate the combination of politics and education. I, I believe that education should be for all students, and I believe that partisan differences should be set aside when it comes to education. It makes me very sad to hear broad-sweeping generalizations that say things to the effect of, "All Republicans hate public schools." That's really what we hear from a lot of the conversations. And I just want to say for the record, as a Republican, I would not go to the trouble of being on a school board if I did not believe in public education and if I did not believe in GCS. I think all of us sitting up here devote a lot of time and energy and our hearts to the work that we do here on the board, because we do believe in public schools and we want to see them improve and become better for every single student that we serve here in the county. And then the only other thing I wanted to say was, welcome back to school, everybody. It's September, it's time to hit the ground running and, and do the best that we can do and bring forward even better results for next year than what we saw tonight. We saw some great improvements, um, in the past year, and I know we can do even better next year. So, thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
Um, first of all, uh, a hundred years ago, whenever I used to work in the old High Point school system, I was at the second, uh, highest attend, lowest attendance, if you will, school, behind the alternative school. And it was at seventy-two percent within two years, because I was a homeschool coordinator. We went from seventy-two to ninety-seven. But it did take that, you know, I mean- But it did take that, you know, and that was my job every morning is was to look at the attendance, see who wasn't there and go get them. Now, I understand that we don't have perhaps that kind of funding now, but we, you know, as one of the other colleagues said, if we can figure out, I don't know, attendance hotline or something that if a kid wants to come to school, is there someone they can call and say, can you come get me? And I don't know if legally we can do that now or not. But, you know, when I was a homeschool coordinator, I used to, if I saw a child walking on the street, I'd pull up and say, hey, get in the car. And I'd take them to whatever school. They weren't necessarily at my school, but they got to school. And as long as I got them there by 11 o'clock, you know, it was counted. So I know that if you can get some of these schools to give attention to that, you probably can improve it. I don't know how, whether that's perhaps a job for volunteerism. I don't know, but something. The other thing I want to say is thank you to all of y'all. The accountability report, in my opinion, is hope. It shows that when you're out here in the grind, you don't really know, are you making a difference? And though we would like for this to reflect some other things, it does tell us that we are doing an effective job. And we come in, as the chair said, you're talking about the 2025 graduation. We just, a couple of weeks ago, we were just doing 2024. But we can't stop. We have to keep going. The other thing is, is that my heart sunk last, I think it was Monday, whenever I saw the news report about the shooting. And I want us to remember every day that all of us have a responsibility to safety, community and effort. We've got to turn this thing around. And yeah, we can pray and God hears us, but we got to get those guns off the street and out of our children's hands and out of crazy people's hands. Now, how we do that, I'm not sure. But, you know, our teachers and our students do not come to school not to go home. And, you know, I think that if you ask a teacher, and Dr. Morrison speaks this, if you talk about dying on the job, a teacher did not die or a coach or a counselor, you know, from being shot. That's just, that's a now thing that we need to figure out. What do we do? I know. I hear the ding ding. So I hope that each one of us tonight will say a special prayer for our students, our families and for our work staff because they need to go home every day. And we need to figure out a way to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim?
Is it two minutes or three minutes?
Three minutes.
Huh? Three minutes? Okay.
In person, it's three.
Three minutes. I'm starting my clock now. Welcome back to everyone. I did have the opportunity to stop by Jones Elementary and Faulkner Elementary this year on the first day of school and just saw, you know, families. I had no idea how many families come on the first day of school to actually enroll their students. So that was definitely an eye opener at Faulkner. And I saw so many, you know, families, diverse families coming to Faulkner. So it looks like they have their own United Nations over there. Congratulations to Tammy Whitaker. Yes, she is a godsend to the Transportation Department. She helped me many days with my students, my own students and transportation. I'm glad to see that she is being recognized today. And of course, High Point Central, Mike Hettenbach is just doing great work over at High Point Central. It's going to be very hard, this competition between Jamestown and High Point with these Principals of the Year, but it is exciting. So congratulations to all of them, our top five principals that are, excuse me, six that are being recommended for Principal of the Year. And just for clarity, public schools, right, continue to be asked to do more with less. And let us be clear that charter schools, they are not public schools. They are not public schools. They are publicly funded schools, which is a big difference. They are also their own public education system. And a lot of our families are drawn into a system that they don't have anything, any information, how it's going to operate. They don't even know their own boards of education at their charter schools. So our system, our schools, Guilford County, we're doing a great job. We have a lot of choice in Guilford County from K through 12. We have a lot to brag about. The report says to me that we're all the way up. We're on our way. And that's the direction that we want to be in and go in. And yes, I agree, retirees, come on back. I saw all of you, you know, at the luncheon. So I got your names and your numbers. So I'm going to be calling some of you. And yes, to the sales tax, we can make that happen as well. Thank you so much and have a good night.
Thank you, Kim. Deborah?
I mean, I think a lot of the points that I wanted to make have really been driven home by both the public comments and by my fellow board members. We need to support the sales tax increase. And let me just hit that one more time, that that sales tax increase will go to pay the staff that directly interacts with our students. This is one thing that we have control over exactly where we routed. And the county commissioners have already dedicated that money to our direct staff. And if we support this measure, y'all, we can pay our teachers. I know y'all have all seen the billboards. We need our teachers. We need to pay them. This part we can control. Cannot control what goes on in Raleigh. All we can do is drive them crazy. And I know that myself and my fellow board members stay in touch with our representatives at the state level on a constant basis to keep pushing that point. And to that end, I would say that, you know, just starting school this week is an excellent, these last two weeks is an excellent example of why they need more compensation. Because I have watched like the car rider lines in the mornings and in the afternoons go from a half an hour to a 45 minute event, down to a 20 minute thing that you know they have been doing this forever. They get people in, they get the kids in the car, they get the people back out. And it is a well-oiled machine and it happened in a matter of days. That expertise doesn't just come overnight. Our teachers dedicate their time. Our principals and APs dedicate their time to making sure that all of this works the way it needs to. And they should be supported and compensated for everything that they put into our schools. And that well-oiled machine will continue to run. And I would like to stop one more time and say thank you to the staff that support our kids, that keep us parents in and out without losing our minds. It's a beautiful thing. And my girls are so happy to be back in school. And just seeing them come home every day with something new on their minds and so ready to pick up and do more is just incredibly, is just a testament to what our teachers and staff do for our kids on a day in, day out basis. And finally, to Diane Bellamy Small's point, I would like to share a little story that my oldest has given me permission to share. For those of you who don't know, I am actually a first generation citizen. My family's Canadian. And at one point, we had talked about the potential of immigrating back up to Canada. And during that time, we spoke to my oldest daughter about it. And one thing that came up that is that in Canada, they don't do active shooter drills. And she immediately began to panic, asking, what do they do? How do they keep safe? What happens if someone comes in the building and they've got a gun? The expression on her face and the near instant terror, you know, y'all, I was in tears. And I had to explain to her that the reason they don't have active shooter drills is because they don't have the guns for active shooters. And watching her understand that what we go through here and what we put our youngest children through is completely optional was just unthinkable. Diane was right. Everybody's right. It's got to stop. And it starts with the parents. And the first thing you can do is if you know your child is having a mental health problem, please access the resources that we have for them. You have the resources to get help for your child if you know that they are going through something. They don't even have to tell you what, just offer. They might not want to have the conversation with you because they don't want to hurt their parents' feelings. Just offer. It's there. It's there for the students. It's there for the teachers. We've supplied it for everyone we can possibly afford to do. Please use it. You might save lives, not a life. There's never been just a life. It's lives. We've got to do something about the guns because our children's hearts are breaking and they're terrified. And they don't comprehend a world where they don't have to be that scared. Thank you.
Thank you. I will be quick. I just want to ditto what Pastor Charaus, everything that he said, as usual. Dr. Oakley, thank you for the pizza example with the sales tax. I don't think people understand that. It was, I was like, oh, instead of $20.30, it'll be $20.35. I mean, that just makes things simple because these are really like these complex budget and financial things that, you know, people who are just working every day and trying to do all of the things that they do. So that was really helpful. I'm going to use that a lot. Charters to public school comparisons are not an apples to apples comparison. But what we do know is that charters face the same challenges that we face. As a matter of fact, I think one of the DPI reports said nearly 40% of charter schools received a D or an F. And after I look at, you know, our data tonight, you know, I just, I know that no matter where your kids go, when you have a challenge, it's a frightening thing and you're looking for someplace better. But there's just no place to hide or no place to run. And if we want to make them great, then we have to be a part of doing that. We can all look to New Orleans to see that the sort of charter only system has been a mixed bag of results and has been very challenging. I know that they're attempting to run to a, to operate a district run school. And now they have to put all the infrastructure back in place and, you know, a central office and curriculum and staffing, all of those things. And so if we want to put ourselves through that, you know, we will keep going in the direction that we're going. But I hope that the organizing in the community will continue to step up and defeat those efforts soon. I don't think I have anything else. Except I would say that GHo is provocative sounding if you're not from here. It stands for the greatest homecoming on earth. So while Betty was saying that, she was just like, GHo? And I was just like, we'll just tell people what it is in case they don't live here. But people should know what GHo is. The greatest homecoming on earth. North Carolina A&amp;T State University Homecoming, October 19th. And we will all be there. A lot of us, huh? Tailgating, game, all that, all that. All right. With that, I entertain a motion. Is there a second? Second. Are those in favor, say aye? Any opposed? All right, good night. Thank you, Kim. Thank you, Deborah.